I'd like to call to order this session, the Tacoma Park City Council, with a clerk call the role.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Here.
Great. All right, our first item tonight is the city manager's presentation of the recommended FY 2022 budget. This will be her last presentation of a budget in Tacoma Park. So I'm gonna, just for people who might be tuning in, yes, it is six o'clock, so it's a little earlier. We're gonna have the budget presentation and then at 7:30 begin with our normal meeting agenda. So I'll turn it over to Suzy.
Thank you very much, and we're gonna have one of our trustees, City TV, run the PowerPoint for me tonight. So we can load that up, and I'm looking forward to sharing the fiscal '22 proposed budget. It always takes lots of work. There we go. And let's go to the next page. So the big picture is that this is a maintenance of effort budget. It has no major new initiatives or services. I'm requesting and proposing a small tax rate increase to 55 cents per $100 assessed value from the current $5,397. This will allow some ability to help advance city goals not otherwise included in the budget, as you have established in your city council's priorities. One very interesting component is that there are federal American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds that will be coming to the city of Tacoma Park. We are using some to replenish some lost revenue, but most decisions about how the funds can be used will need to wait for guidance from the US Treasury Department. Next. Like to brag that we've won three years in a row the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association Award for Distinguished Budget Presentation. I'm very proud of the staff that worked on this. Finance Director Susan Chung, Budget and Accounting Manager Ron Kawali, Deputy City Manager Jessica Clark, Communication Specialist Donna Wright. Doing this remotely and at a difficult time is, and coming up with such a, meeting so many different standards is awesome, and I appreciate the job that they have done. Next. So the presentation tonight, I'll go over the budget schedule. The bulk of the presentation will be a budget overview on revenue sources and key points. We'll talk about how this budget implements council priorities and then discuss next steps. Next. So tonight, it's April 7th, presentation of the proposed budget. There will be a public hearing next Wednesday, April 14th, on the budget. On Monday, April 19th, and Monday, April 26th, there will be budget work sessions. The first will be on the capital components of the budget, and the second on the operating components of the budget. On April 28th are the formal public hearings on the tax rate and the constant yield tax rate and the budget again. On May 3rd, there is the third budget work session, which will be focused on council reconciliation. Then it goes for approval on May 12th and May 19th with the two reading ordinances. Next. So the, the numbers part of the budget, the total revenue of all funds is just over 36 million. The total general fund revenue is 27.4 million. And total general fund expenditures are 35.7 million. The proposed tax rate increase, as I mentioned, goes from 53.97 cents to 55 cents per $100 assessed valuation. Each cent of the real property tax equals approximately $257,870. This is always an important number when reconciliation is being discussed. The constant yield tax rate is 52.95 cents per $100. This means that if we had wanted to just bring in the same amount of property tax revenue as the state believes we are bringing in during FY '21, the tax rate would need to be lowered by about a cent. The constant yield tax rate plus the employment cost index for state and local government is 2.3, of 2.3%, comes out to 54 cents, 17. I have a little chart here on this page that shows, it shows what a constant yield number, tax rate number is, what the city manager proposed for a tax rate, and then what was eventually adopted by the city council. And as you can see, all pretty close together. Generally, the constant yield tax rate is lower than the final tax rate. And in every case, the proposed tax rate's higher than the final tax rate. It's simply the way that this process works. Because we cannot advertise a tax rate and then choose a higher one. And so that's how state law in Maryland works. Next slide. A couple more charts, and we can go over them at another time, but it shows what the different tax rates have been over time, how the net assessable base has increased. And if you happen to have a house that in the current year was valued at 500,000 and had a assessable base, a net assessable base of $40,000 more, if you went to the higher tax rate of 55 cents per $100, it would mean that you were paying an additional $271.50 in FY '22. Next. So here's some people who got vaccinated. They're very happy in this picture. And so the, the end of the COVID-19 pandemic is in sight with vaccinations becoming more and more available. And also, we have federal and state governments taking steps to address financial and health needs. So this budget is being, theme is planning for a new day. The budget addresses city needs during and after the pandemic, as well as provides the foundation and tools for new leadership joining the city. A new city manager, a new library director who's on board, a housing and community development director, and a public works deputy director who should be on board this month. Next. When we look at the four budget fund categories and their revenue sources, I think it's always helpful to go through this. In the general fund, we have property taxes, income tax, intergovernmental revenue, and charges for services. And the graph that's shown here is on those general fund revenues. Essentially, half of the revenues come from property taxes. More than a quarter comes from intergovernmental revenue. A small amount, about 13%, comes from income tax, and then there's a small amount of charges and fees. The stormwater fund is funded by fees from property owners. The special revenue fund is funded by grants that we receive, and the speed camera fund is funded by fines. Next. So when we go through the general fund revenue, we're looking at $27.4 million that would be coming to the city if this tax rate were approved. 95% of that revenue comes from just three sources. The property taxes, which are the real property, which is the major portion, personal property tax, and railroad and utility taxes. That comprises 53% of that, of the revenue for the general fund. This is the third year of the triennial assessment, and so for the next budget, there will be a new assessment of properties in Tacoma Park. And our entire city is within one assessment area. The, it's from what we are learning, residential assessments are not likely to be affected by the pandemic, and in fact, values seem to be increasing. The... One of the things that was unfortunate is that the city council had approved removal of the inventory tax from our businesses. But the state government did not make the change and did not take, did not reduce the amount that they were taking from the businesses. So we were in the process of refunding the amounts that we received. So when we look through the numbers, the amount of money that we're getting from personal property tax, you'll see is affected by the amount that we're having to refund at a later date. And our businesses have been suffering through the pandemic with not, with, with not having those funds. So we've been very vigorously trying to get those monies refunded to our businesses. Interjurisdictional funds represent 29%. That's tax duplication, it's highway user revenue, so there's state payments, there's some different categories. This particular year, we have added $1.2 million from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act funds to offset lost revenue. Primarily Recreation Department program revenue that we've not received in the past year, a little over a year, and that we don't anticipate receiving at the beginning of FY '22. The interjurisdictional category usually represents about 25% of general fund revenues. The reason it's 29% is that addition of the ARPA funds to that category. Income tax is about 13%. It's based on the 2020 income by state law. It is 17% of the income tax that would otherwise go to Montgomery County. This amount of income tax has been increasing each year, but it stays about the same percentage of the total general fund revenue in the 13% to 15% range. Next. We have 5% are charges for services of the general fund revenue. And that's usually, we have about 8%, and it's usually made up of Recreation Department program funds. Because we have not been charging for most of our recreation programs, or not having our programs, we have not been receiving the revenue for that category. The difference in funds have been added to the interjurisdictional category using ARPA funds. This year, at the beginning of this process with the budget consideration, the unassigned general fund balance is $2.8 million. The council policy is to require this amount to be at least 17% of the general fund operating revenue, which would be about $4.66 million. We continue to be using the restricted bond reserve for the library project. And we also know that we have about $14.8 million in two tranches pursuant to the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. The, most of the first $7.4 million is in a special revenue fund pending guidance on the use by the Treasury Department. One important component is that we use our reserves sometimes in case there may be unanticipated lost revenue. And in this case, we are able to use ARPA funds for that, for that use. Next. Our stormwater fund, we went through a lot of stormwater discussions this past year, and we have the new fee structure. Additional funding is needed in FY '22 because, for two reasons. One, when last year, we were talking about transferring $50,000 from the general fund into the stormwater fund while we were in the transition, moving to the new, to the new tiered system for fees, we did not do that. And so we were a little bit low in the amount of money that we have in the stormwater fund. We also need to purchase a new street sweeper, and they are extremely expensive. And we would be buying an electric one, which is about twice as much as we had put aside in the equipment replacement reserve. So when that all works out, we're splitting between the stormwater fund and the equipment replacement reserve for the purchase of a new street sweeper. So I'm proposing moving $65,000 from the general fund to the stormwater fund to ensure that we have enough funding in the stormwater fund for all of the elements that we'd like to cover. And we do believe that in average, the approximately $700,000 budget is sufficient for the stormwater fund. Next. We have special revenue funds, and one of the things that's exciting is that we have staff that go after grants. And we have been really quite successful in getting some important ones. We've got a series of grants in the budget this year. We have the State Facade Grant for properties along New Hampshire Avenue, businesses. We have a CDBG Houston Court Project of $91,000. We have CDBG ADA Sidewalk Work of $91,000. We've got obviously some state funds for the library construction, in addition to our bonding that we took out. We have $45,000 for the, in the TKPK 5K race category. One of the big ticket items is, and big grant is on the new Ave Parkway, Section A. That's $320,000 that we've received. We have a small match to that. We have a match of $80,000 to that. We have a Safe Drops to School Grant, Tacoma Park Foundation Grant, and we have cable equipment monies. Next. So one of the big categories this year in the special revenue fund is the American Rescue Plan Act. And so we have taken the 7.4 that we're expecting to, 7.4 million that we're expecting to get in FY '22. We've transferred $1.2 million into the general fund for those items that we are quite certain are able to be used. And the remaining $6.2 million, we are putting in a pot in the special revenue fund for discussion and later with the council to determine how it should best be used. The, the way that it's to be given is essentially by June or late June, early July, we should be receiving the first half of about $14.8 million. So 7.4 million that is designed to help replace lost revenue, provide assistance to residents and small businesses that are hurt by the pandemic, allow for certain hazard pay, and improve water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Also, within the ARPA are many other funding sources for mental health and healthcare and other kinds of rental assistance and things. But for the portion that comes to us as a municipality, it is in this, in this special category that would total for about $14.8 million. The guidance on how the funds can be spent has not yet been issued by the US Treasury Department. We are involved in many of the discussions about what, how it could be used, what should we be looking for, how will we report on it? I noticed that even questions that I have asked and submitted to the National Legal Cities did show up in, in a actual document to the Treasury Department. So we're, we're actively involved in finding out what we, how we can use these funds appropriately. Besides the $1.2 million to replace lost revenue, we have allocated $100,000 for a document management system. We believe it's something that we desperately need as a, for our offices, but it will be really important if we're handing out grants and overseeing contracts and a variety of things with these funds. So we feel quite comfortable that it could be funded from ARPA. We have $8,000 for assistance to businesses in the facade improvement program. And as I said, we're waiting for clarification on the other items. We have identified a waitlist of some of those items. And so those are things, as we learn, we will be sitting down with the council, and we'll go through budget discussions and budget amendments for the determination of how those funds should use, be used in Tacoma Park. Next. Speed camera fund, we've not had a lot of, we've had some decline in the speed camera monies. We have three staff that are funded from the speed camera fund that either help operate the speed camera fund or provide a traffic and pedestrian safety services in the police department. We're gonna continue to monitor the trends through the pandemic, and we're limiting expenditures from this category at this time so that we don't have a problem with the fund. Next. So one of the key things is personnel. Personnel makes up the bulk of our budget. And one of the things, when you look through the budget book, some of the categories really can't be compared because we had a number of departments that did not have part-time staff working during FY '21. Recreation had many staff that were not employed, and so you can't quite compare what are we proposing for FY '22 to FY '21 because it looks like a big jump. So you have to kind of look at FY '20, how did that really function? What's, what's the appropriate level of funding for the department? So as you go through and look through the budget book, you'll see when it makes sense that it compares to FY '21, and when it makes more sense to compare to FY '20. The, last year, or this current year, FY '21, we only had a 1.5 increase for staff. We had no increase for step increases or for, for merit increases or for the normal step increase. We just increased everybody 1.5%. The FY '22 budget anticipates filling the part-time and full-time staff positions that were previously authorized or filled, and providing a modest wage increase. Again, we are in contract negotiations, reopeners for wages for the city's two unions. In general, we're looking at a total of about a 2% increase, and that combines a couple of different categories, and we'll be talking with the council about those items. One of the things, though, that's important to note is that we have a slight decrease in full-time equivalents in this proposed for the FY '22 budget, about a quarter of a full-time staff person. We are adding, however, proposing to add a second full-time communication staff person to assist our communications specialist. And so that is something that we feel even if we didn't, even if the ARPA funds and things ended, we would continue to need more than one person doing communications for the city. The decline in other positions offsets that by three quarters of a person. Next. So capital projects and purchases, when we go through the list, it looks pretty standard with the exception of the street sweeper. Equipment replacement reserve, which are equipment that we periodically have to replace and we budget for, includes information technology infrastructure, five police vehicles of public works equipment, public works vehicles, as well as a public works loader, which is $200,000, and the electric streets, street sweeper, which is $546,000. Other general fund purchases include police equipment. These are capital purchases, police equipment. Mostly, most of that is mobile computers, about $150,000 worth. Our standard $500,000 in ADA sidewalk work, $250,000 in sidewalk or traffic calming work, $500,000 in road resurfacing, and then streetlight upgrades and funds for bike improvements, bus shelter improvements, public space improvements. The $80,000 for the city match to the grant for the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Way Part One. We put in $250,000 for a possible capital housing project, not from the Housing Reserve, but there's not a, anything necessarily specified for that. So that's just kind of a placeholder in case, as we talk out some options for that. And then the $50,000 for the remaining city match to the $100,000 State Facade Grant. The facility maintenance reserve has a couple of small items. HVAC improvements and some gym floor improvements in the rec center because there's some dead spaces due to flooding. But it's also represents the start of the atrium fill-in project, which is in the $800,000 category. We don't anticipate starting it right off the bat, so we're looking at about $200,000 in the FY '22 fiscal year. Stormwater work includes Hillwood Manor Playground. I know that there's a council member very happy about that. Cockrell Avenue Pipe Realignment, and of course, half the cost of the street sweeper. There's some small purchases in the speed camera fund, the camera trailer and bike unit equipment. Next. When we look at the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, we've come up with a list of some things that might be able to be funded through that program. And because ARPA is one-time money, capital purchases fit as a one-time expense and can be very useful, be a good match. So we've, I mentioned the $100,000 document storage management software, $8,000 in, for the assistance with facade grants. But some of the wish list items can include some major stormwater infrastructure, if stormwater infrastructure is permitted to be addressed, as well as technology systems that might help the city staff in the long term, and not just through the ARPA programs. Next. Okay, so we had a library coming. It's getting close to going, getting ready for going out to bid. When we look at how the capital improvement expenditure is in FY '22, it shows half of it going to the library, but we are not, but that's not how that comes out of the budget. That's borrowed money. The cost for the library is spread over 30 years with a debt payment of about $390,000 a year, and we have some grant funds in addition to help pay for that. Next. So as I mentioned, the departmental and non-departmental budgets are maintenance of effort budgets. It is, when you go through, is a bare bones budget. We are assuming a phase into full in-person We are assuming a phase into full in-person service by January of twenty twenty two. We're starting childcare services Monday, kind of phasing that in. Our city facilities are likely to open for basic services by about September with in-person conferences and events expected to return to pre-pandemic levels by the winter. We made very few changes in the base budget from past years. The funds for assistance to residents and small businesses that are hurt by the pandemic, instead of coming from the COVID nineteen fund that the council set aside last year, it will come from ARPA's Special Revenue Fund. That's, it's really designed for that and there's a lot of money for that. Besides the kinds of programs we funded under the COVID nineteen fund, we're looking at items like workforce development and business assistance that can really build strength within our community and be long-lasting improvements, not just money for rent for this year, but how do you make a better, have a better job, have a better business system so that you are more sufficient over the long term? One of the things I'm hoping for, if the U.S. Treasury Department permits, as we look at supporting our small businesses, can that help us do some commercial area improvements? Can we improve the streetscape around our businesses? Can we have bike transit and sidewalk connections to our businesses? Those kinds of things are, can be expensive, but they can make a remarkable improvement in our community that we've been phasing in little bit by little bit. But it would be wonderful to be able to, to take a big leap and, and make those improvements for our both economic and environmental sustainability reasons. Next. So one thing that we have a base budget, but there are, there's a number of things that council members have indicated that they would like to see and trying to figure out how to cover that. So I've put aside kind of an unallocated three hundred thousand dollars that might be able to be used for some of the initiatives and programs that council has talked about. There's resident survey, there may be race equity work, there could be engineering work related to flooding across private properties. There's been discussion of tree canopy pilot program, other climate, a climate change resilience actions and then technology improvements. And so one of the things that we're looking at is kind of where does the council want to go with some of these things? Three hundred thousand dollars represents one point one six cents of the proposed fifty-five cent per one hundred dollar tax rate. So if you decided not to spend the full three hundred thousand, you could lower that rate, obviously. But it is something that I think provides a real opportunity to determine what makes sense for FY twenty two and what you want to see pursued with your council goals and priorities. The, the other thing is, and we had a very interesting staff meeting where one of my staff said, you know, the fourteen point eight million is about forty percent of our budget and we have two hundred people full and part-time that work on that budget. We're going to have to have more people to appropriately spend the fourteen point eight million dollars. It can't be long-term staff. It's got to be short-term contracts or other kinds of limited-term staffing. But we need to be prepared for that and we need to have the right financial and monitoring setups as well as the HR staff to deal with that. We're not identifying those yet, but that's part of what will be discussed when that fourteen point eight million dollar is looked at. Next. So as the mayor mentioned at the beginning of this, this is my last budget. One of the things that I, I want to make sure to really leave an imprint on is the long-term financial stability of the city. It's been something I've been committed to, but it does take a joint approach to this. So as we go forward, we need to keep the ongoing revenue consistent with ongoing expenditures. Property tax revenue has not increased at a sufficient rate to keep up with the modest, modest increased costs of operations and new services that have been added. Between twenty eleven and twenty twenty, assessed property value increased by thirty-one percent in Tacoma Park, while the real property tax rate, tax revenue increased twenty-one percent. This reflects the lowering of property tax rates over time and it recognizes the concern the council has for residents with limited incomes, which is very important and we look at that very carefully. One of the things that we have to look at, though, is that personnel always increases on a, at least on a per-person basis. We have to keep up with the area labor market and there are increases in health insurance. Personnel costs can only be reduced by cutting personnel or having technology that then limits the number of staff that are needed. One of the major reasons that we have a problem with the budget is that the formula-based municipal tax duplication payments have not been put in place. They have been frozen by Montgomery County since twenty twelve. And if you've got increased costs of services and our residents are paying increased costs of taxes, but that money is going to Montgomery County and is not being rebated to us and we cannot keep absorbing that difference. The other aspect that we need to continue to work on, we've been doing, I think, a good job started, getting started, is on economic development. Economic development and economic development investments need to be encouraged. This is a way for the tax, taxes to be more broadly spread across property owners and not just on single-family residential property owners. Next. So one of the things that I really appreciate is that the council sets priorities and takes it very seriously. In January, you establish six priorities and the staff based the budget recommendations on those priorities. And the priorities are mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen on the community and on city operations, a livable community for all, fiscally sustainable government, environmentally sustainable community, engaged, responsive and service-oriented government and community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. Next. Priorities are essential when funds are tight, when we have an emergency and when choices are difficult. And all of those are the situation we're in right now. Funds are always tight in Tacoma Park. Obviously, we've had the COVID nineteen pandemic as well as critical social issues, gun violence, which we've seen, and climate change-related storms. And we want to be the best, right? We want to be cutting edge. We want to make the most progress. And how do you do that? You prioritize. Next. So on implementing the council priorities, the first one is mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen on the community and city operations. And one of the things that I just want to urge everyone to do is to recognize the emotional health and financial impacts of the pandemic on residents and on employees in all of the actions that we undertake as a city government. And that's not necessarily a, necessarily a budget aspect, but it is something to keep, I think, front of mind as we go through this process. We're very fortunate to have federal funds to address needs of residents and small businesses. The American Rescue Plan Act is a godsend to the city of Tacoma Park and to communities across the country. We're able to continue grants and emergency assistance that we did through the COVID nineteen fund. We can pay for free or low cost before and after school care and summer camps for families that are financially hurt by the pandemic. We can focus on the long-term assistance, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, including workforce development, marketing and business operation consulting services for our businesses. And if we're able to, under the, under the regulations, it would be wonderful to be able to undertake capital improvements to help commercial areas thrive into the future. And we hope to be able to handle stormwater improvements that help the community through these funds. Hopefully you find out soon so we can start to work on that. We, we also can use federal funds to help city operations, obviously to restore lost city revenues. But to the extent possible, what can we choose carefully in terms of technology, in terms of processes that will allow us to not only manage the ARPA grant funds, but will help us be more effective in the future with community engagement, with technology, with services that are, that we just haven't been doing. We've been doing manually for so long. Next. A livable community for all. We've got new library. Continuing a focus on race equity. Continue implementation of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. We've got the Minor Master Plan that's moving forward. We've got the operationalizing, the recommendations that will come from the reimagining Public Safety Task Force. We've got ways to pursue Vision Zero goals and sustainability. We have a Tacoma Park Recreation Center project that we can put, go out for request proposals on. We've got community grants and partnerships, arts, which, much of which is being proposed to be done in conjunction with city infrastructure improvements. And we're hoping to get back to community events that meet safety protocols. So we're, we're looking forward to actually seeing people and watch, listening to music. Next. Fiscally sustainable government, spoken about that through this. We want to carefully monitor our financial situation during and after the pandemic. We want to carefully use the federal ARPA funds. We love to have more reserves. We have to get a structural change in the tax duplication rebate system from Montgomery County. And we do need to really focus on having those sufficient ongoing revenues to meet ongoing expenditures. Next. Environment, sustainable community. We've got actions that can be taken through the Climate Emergency Response Framework. We've got stormwater improvements, continued rebates and grants for clean and efficient energy use. We could use some of the three hundred thousand dollars in allocated funds for environmental work, tree canopy pilot program or work to address flooding across multiple private properties and investigate use of ARPA funds for stormwater infrastructure work and commercial space and area improvements that could advance environmental goals. And just one thing that I think is, is different this year that has been is that Montgomery County is moving forward on a number of environmental steps. And so how do we complement them, not replace them? How do we complement that work? Next. Engage, responsive and service-oriented government. How do we help the communities that are impacted by the pandemic? How do we really embrace community engagement actions and technologies, including website update and other kinds of outreach efforts? And we need a new full-time staff person to assist the communications specialist in the work that is needed. Next. And community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. We need to increase and support commercial development. We need to reduce the amount paid by single-family homeowners on taxation by offsetting that by having stronger commercial districts. We need to provide goods and services close to home. That limits travel and fossil fuel use. It provides local jobs and training opportunities and it provides opportunities to make energy efficiency and ADA accessibility improvements to our buildings. Many of our buildings don't meet these standards and we need to, we need to meet them. Economic development initiatives will focus heavily on those activities in FY twenty two that could be funded by the ARPA funds. The work on the Recreation Center project will continue and you'll hear about that in a few minutes, right after returning from dinner break. The implementation of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan will continue. We'll work with the Minor Master Plan and we'll be looking at monitoring the purple line work and how does that help us and how do we protect against the difficulties of construction? Next. Well, thank you. This is my, thank, part of my different approach this year. With my retirement on July one, this is the last budget. I will prepare a city manager. And I'm so grateful to have been part of the city for twenty-seven years. I've got a wonderful staff that prepare the budget. They are really tired right now, just to say. But, and many of our department heads and mid-level staff spend many, many days working on the proposed budget. I want to note particularly the extraordinary work done by Finance Director Susan Chung, Deputy City Manager Jessica Clark, Ron Kawali, our Budget and Accounting Manager, and Communication Specialist Donna Wright, who has to fill in at the last minute in the middle of the night to make something work in the budget. So really appreciate all of that activity. Other municipalities have whole divisions that they, that are just devoted to this kind of work and these are folks who do this work in addition to their daily duties. Next. So while I look forward to enjoying springtime next year, actually maybe going to a baseball game or something. I, I want to note that my work on preparing the proposed budget for council consideration each year is what I'm most proud of regarding my service to the city of Tacoma Park. The goals of the city council have been effectuated through the annual budget and the financial health of the city has remained sound through recessions and through this current pandemic. And so I look forward to consideration of budget with you. And I think Tacoma Park can look forward to a bright new day ahead. Next. And so we've, the next step is public hearing on the budget next Wednesday. I look forward to people's questions. We will have FAQs posted and we'll have opportunity for a lot of getting into the weeds with the council members as we go through the budget work sessions. I don't know if there's any clarification, questions anybody has, but that's the end of my presentation today.
Great, great. Thank you so much. Let's see, open it up and see if council members have any questions at this point.
I'll just note one other thing. The budget book has some new functions, has a couple of new aspects to it, which I think you'll find helpful. One is that percentage column that people wanted. It's sometimes useful, sometimes not, depending on when you, what years you have to compare. But there's also a consolidated financial overlook section at the, near the beginning of the, of the pages that do help show how much is transferred from reserve to the revenues so that there is a clear balanced budget. It's a question that has always looked strange in the past. And so we wanted to, we've looked at various models that explain that well and I think that you'll find it very helpful in this year's budget book. Of course, my wonderful budget staff are out there looking for ways to improve it every year and I'm really grateful to their, to their insight and suggestions.
Great, and everyone should know that they can access that on the city website. It's up.
That's right. It is up on the city website, yes.
Up on the city website, so people can go there and look. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for the proposal. I, I want to confirm that I didn't see anything regarding the money that the council approved for broadband. Is that still available?
So with broadband, there's, there is money available. The ARPA funds have a whole, we can use, we could use fourteen million dollars on broadband.
Right, I, I know, but you can't use that for equipment. It's only a hundred dollars.
So we, we will make sure that people get it in every way they need to get it, whether it's equipment or service or whichever. We've, those, those funds are available through ARPA.
Okay, because I was on a meeting with FCC folks and they said that they were waiting for treasury. So that hasn't been determined.
So I, I will, I would just note, though, that we're, part of these funds are to help anybody affected by the pandemic. And if that's funding for something else that's not under the broadband category, it gets them the equipment they need, that can easily be handled. We are confident that we will get those services and pieces of equipment to them through this program.
Okay, all right. It's something different than I heard, but I, I didn't see in the budget, any of the proposals I had for library equipment or is that something that I'll have to propose at budget reconciliation or?
There's some, there is, there is some, but some is. There's some, there is, there is some, but some is not. Partly, we wanted to get the new library director on board to make some recommendations, and we're looking at the locations for how we provide services. So lovely, love to talk to you about the different options that we're, we're looking at to make sure that those services are in the city in different places.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Circe.
Great. Well, thank you so much for this presentation. It's, it's been really, really helpful in terms of how you're walking through everything, but I also recognize the fact that this is going to be a very tricky budget year in terms of the ARPA funds and how to allocate them as it relates to how to kind of manage two budgets in my mind is kind of how we need to think about this budget cycle. And so one question I have, just logistically, because I know the Treasury is probably going to take well into our fiscal year, probably. You actually get really clear-cut guidance on what we can use those ARPA funds for. So how do you propose that we, as a council, start making certain suggestions or recommendations about what they want for ARPA versus what, as Councilmember Smith mentioned earlier, things like broadband, which is something we were talking about as part of our budgeting process and priorities, which could fit within that window of ARPA. But by the time we get the guidance, we may be out of, you know, fingers crossed. We'd get the guidance beforehand, but it's a real possibility that we may not get guidance from the Treasury that's solid enough for us to act upon before we're slated to finish our, the city's budget. Makes sense?
Yep. I think, I, I think there will be a couple different ways to go through that. We certainly have a list of the items that we think are very likely to be included based on the reading of ARPA. There's others that are very less clear. And, and my understanding is that Treasury has about two months from the time that the, the bill came out to get those funds out. And so they have to come with, and they intend, I think, on using that period of the time to get the guidance written up. Who knows? But the, what I have heard is that they're trying to get it so that it doesn't just trickle out, but that it's all at once, so that we have really good information to use. That's likely to be after the budget's completed in Tacoma Park. But not before, but probably before the end of this fiscal year. So we, we, I think that's a really important thing as we go through the budget work sessions to talk out those areas that you want to make sure are covered and are in the budget, that may be part of that $300,000 that, that can be identified and allocated for certain uses in case the Treasury Department does not say that it can be covered by ARPA. So that, I think, will be a part of the difficult conversations that we have in the two budget work sessions and then a reconciliation.
And so would your recommendation be that when those ARPA funds are appropriated to municipalities? So when we receive our funds, would the council then need to, first word, start putting together another, what is in essence, another budget approval? Like, so I would submit all of the things that you want to use these ARPA funds for, that needs to go before council. We may have some thoughts about what we want to also seize, and then it's basically a supplemental budget. Does that?
Right. It, it would be, it would be a big budget amendment. And so I, you know, like I said, I think there's a lot that we can put, that we have on a wish list already. There are things that are kind of in the, I don't know if it would work list, and maybe a middle ground one, others that I think are a stretch. But the guidance will come out before the funds get here because of the way that, as a municipality in our category, it goes to the state first and then it comes to us. So other, other municipalities, larger jurisdictions will get the money before we do. And so we will have, I believe, the guidance probably a month before we actually have the funds arrive. So we will have time, I think, to, to look at that guidance and come up with those lists. But yes, it would go through a budget amendment. It would go through that process. It is, it is very similar to another budget process. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I think just, I just want to make sure I understand too, just to follow up on Councilwoman Circe's question, is not only with the ARPA funds, but I think what you're proposing in this budget is with the council priorities as well, that $300,000 would be treated almost in the same way, that you're saying there's, because we don't exactly know what will be covered under ARPA, and there may be in our council priority bucket that can go under ARPA, but other things that we prioritize might not. So the idea, at least at the moment, is moving forward, we have our budget and then we'll have two sets of funds. One is the ARPA fund, one is our, if we continue with what you're proposing, about $300,000 for a council priorities fund. And as it becomes clearer what can be funded through ARPA, we will have budget amendments moving forward into the next year to then fund those programs and priorities we want to have funded.
Yes, you certainly can, let's say you keep the $300,000 and you say you want to have X amount for this kind of library equipment, et cetera. So you could decide that. And then you could, you could have that in the budget and prove it in the budget, but if we find out later that the ARPA can cover it, you can do a budget amendment and change that.
Right.
So those are, those are things that allow some flexibility.
Right. Or if we want to talk about like the stormwater fund and the work on private property, and then if we find out that can go into ARPA, then.
That's right.
All right. Cool. Councilwoman Circe, are you good?
Yes, real quick, just logically, how long do we have to spend the ARPA money?
Through December of 2024.
Okay.
And if it's not spent by then, the state gets it.
Okay, so, you know, I get a little heartburn just by the sheer amount of money, the level of internal controls we need to have.
That's right.
Back that we'll need to get that money spent and programs complete in, what, three years? That?
That's right.
I, I could imagine that we're going to have to work pretty quickly and know what we want. So.
That, that's right. And, but, but the money doesn't have to be spent by us so much. It can also be allocated to nonprofits. It can be combined with other jurisdictions and have a joint process. So there are some options on that, but, but we are waiting for more advice from, and guidance from the Treasury Department. Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. And, and just to follow up on that last point, as I understand it, and maybe you said this, we can also collaborate with the funds, say with the county or something, so where there's an environmental climate change proposal, for example, that the county is working on through the community energy plan, for example, we could somehow join with them and wouldn't have necessarily have the responsibility for monitoring on our own every dollar of that if we were working with them. I don't know if that's exactly right, but it sounds like that, that's the case. I just had a few questions. I know we'll get into more of the details in the, in the future meetings. You mentioned there was this glitch with the inventory tax. What, how much, what's the total amount of that?
I'll have to, I'll have to get back to you on that.
And then on the reserves and figuring out the percentage, so you said if it was going to get to 17%, it would go up to a higher number. What's the figure that the 17% is calculated on? So in other words, we say the reserve, the unassigned balance should be 17% of the budget, but like which?
It's the general fund, general fund revenue.
General fund revenue. Okay. And then two other questions. One of the things that I always grapple with, and maybe you can include this in a, in a, in the next meeting, is how the money that we borrowed through the bonding process, now we pay that, say for the library, about a little under $400,000 a year, but assuming all goes well with the business on, we're going to pay out millions of dollars from the bond reserve, even though sort of the annual hit on our budget will still be that same $390,000. But so how does the, is the full several million dollars we could pay in the fiscal year counted as an expenditure? It would be good to just, I know this is a complex one, and it seems like every year.
It's, it's, it's a complex issue, but it's, it's actually easier this year because we plan on spending a whole lot of it. And that, then we don't have to reserve it in our, it's not, it can be more unallocated reserve, unassigned reserve. The Finance Director has already been tasked with explaining that at a work session. We'll go through that.
I think, I think that's important. And then the last question is, and this relates again to the ARPA funds. And so we'll be getting half of that at some point in the next few months, maybe a little bit longer than that. And that can be used, among other things, to assist those who are affected negatively financially by the pandemic, as well as helping fill some of our gaps that we have. And so then in addition, we have set aside this amount, and I think it's several hundred thousand dollars, and maybe a little bit more now, in our own COVID fund. And, and so can we, once we get clarity on the ARPA funds, say, okay, we can do everything we want with ARPA. So the $400,000 or whatever the amount is in COVID fund, we can use that for something else, or just throw that into unassigned reserve, it'll boost that, or some version of that? Is that?
We did not include, we did not include a COVID-19 fund in the FY22 budget.
Okay, so does that mean?
We will be using ARPA funds for that.
But does that mean that whatever the amount was that was in COVID-19 already is filtered in through this budget?
Yes.
All right. Maybe at the next meeting, you can sort of.
We, we, we have a really tight budget. I, I cannot, I cannot, I cannot emphasize that enough. The, we've not kept up, our ongoing revenues have not kept up with expenditures, and we're really tight on expenditures. And so it's, it's a very difficult budget. ARPA funds can only be used for certain kinds of things. They can't be used to just pay staff or, you know, pave roads or pay the police or whatever. They can provide the kinds of services, they're very clearly can provide, can provide the kinds of services we have for the COVID-19 fund. And so that's, we were intending to using that.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Any other questions at this point? Councilwoman, Councilwoman DeValas, sorry.
Yes, thank you. A, a request for some information, which may already be in the budget, but I, I have not looked for it yet. How does the, does the money that, that you out, the, the ARPA money that can be used for reimbursing COVID expenses that we had this year? We're looking at losses of revenue that we had in this fiscal year. Can you walk us through, not right now, you know, how that play, how that's reflected in the 22 budget?
Actually, I can, I can mention very briefly, one of the pieces of guidance that we were given through ARPA is that we are to compare revenues to the end, to the fiscal year before the pandemic started. So what we did is we looked at the, at the FY19 budget and the revenues from FY19, and if we did not get as much revenue in a category in FY20 or FY21, or, and we would, we basically reimbursed ourselves for that difference. And so that was, that was quite clear. We also had very, it was primarily Recreation Department revenue that we did not get. In addition, there was the interest rate changes that cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we went through and, you know, passport money, we didn't get, this is, you know, so we went through the list of those revenue sources that were different than were in FY19, and we identified those and documented those.
Right. And then how does that, how is that reflected in the fiscal 22 budget? Is that the general fund is bigger going into fiscal 22? How is that captured?
Yes, it's capped, you'll see it as a, as a specific revenue source, ARPA funds revenue source in the, in the, in the general fund revenues. Yeah.
Okay. And then that number covers fiscal 20, fiscal 21, and estimated fiscal 22?
For limited Recreation Department.
Those we know about. Okay. Right.
We anticipate that there will be more as we get into FY22, but we were being very conservative on how.
Sure, because we haven't got the guidance. I, I get that. Okay, so that, the way that it's reflected is that there's a new revenue source, which is money. Okay, which, but it actually reflects these other years. Thank you. And I hope that it'll be possible to see a list of the categories of things that you think will be, could be funded or likely to be funded. So that we can factor that into our budget decisions through this budget.
Yes.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks.
And everybody, and the rest of your team.
They're great.
Any other questions at this point? No. So as, as I mentioned before, the budget document is up on the website. In addition, I, I forgot to check, ask the city manager this earlier today, but I know every year the same questions are asked. And last year and even prior to last year, our former deputy city manager had really started doing a great sort of like frequently asked questions.
Yes.
Is that also now up on the website, or are we going to get that?
We will have it soon if it's not already, but yes, it's, it's always very helpful.
I think it's always very helpful. I think a municipal budget is a, sort of a different beast than other budgets that people are used to looking at. And so we do get same, same questions year, year in and year out. So I think it's the, the, the Q and A is really helpful to also take a look at as you're looking at the budget, and I'm glad to hear about the new additions this year to help with the ease of reading the budget. So, great. I think we will all sit with this. And I know also for council members who want a hard copy of the budget, that's also available. As we all know, we scribble in the margins and do stickies and all that other stuff, so.
If anyone does not want a hard copy, let me know, but I'm otherwise having them available for each of you.
And when will they be available to pick up?
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Well, why don't we take, I guess, like a 15-minute break and come back and continue our meeting at 7:30? And we can use, I'm asking the city clerk, use the same link?
Yes, just rejoin with using the same link. So the meeting, we'll keep the meeting basically running, stop recording, and then you can just join back in.
Okay. So we'll see each other in about 15 or 20 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.